Welcome, everyone. We will call this regular meeting of the Delmar College Board of Regents to order at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, September 12th. I'd like to call or roll to establish our quorum. Mr. Krul. Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Dr. Turner.
Here.
Dr. Adami.
Here.
Mr. Garza.
Here.
Mr. Loeb.
Here.
Dr. Babaly.
Here.
I'm Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Please join me in a moment of silence. Mr. Loeb, would you lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please join us in reading the Delmar College Vision Statement. "Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities." Thank you. Delmar College is streaming live audio and video from the official Board of Regents meeting on the college's website in real time, with exception portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute. We now have the opportunity for anyone to address the Board for general public comment on any items not on the agenda today. Do we have anyone who would like to address the Board under general comments? Seeing none, we will start our meeting with recognitions. And as Dr. Halcom is coming up to begin that process, wanted to inform the Board that I'll be, might make a couple of adjustments to the agenda today. Regent Everett is going to join us remotely for a little bit this afternoon, and when she comes back, we will go, I think, into our regular agenda items so that we can adopt our tax rate and the tax levy and our tax exemption, so she can be a part of that. So just wanted to give staff a heads-up that we might jump to that portion of the meeting when she joins us, which we think is going to be around 1:30 or so. So with that, Dr. Halcom, look forward to recognitions that you have for us today.
Thank you. I'm pleased to announce that our Dean of Business, Entrepreneurship, and Health Sciences has successfully completed her EDD and Community College Leadership from Kansas State University, conferred on August 11th, 2023. Jennifer Schrammick will attend her commencement ceremony on December 8th in Manhattan, Kansas. Her dissertation is entitled "Exploration of Adjunct Faculty Engagement in Student Success Initiatives Within a Community College System." During her work towards her doctorate in education degree, she published, along with co-author George Boggs, "Why Community Colleges Are Smart Choices for Faculty." So in the diverse issues in higher education and the community college news now where it was published in April of 2023, it contains a quote that seems so relevant. "Perhaps the greatest reward for faculty is to see their students, many of whom have overcome significant obstacles, receive degrees or certificates at pending ceremonies and graduation exercises." I think that's so relevant to us at Delmar College. Dr. Schrammick is invaluable as Dean of Business, Entrepreneurship, and Health Sciences. She began as a faculty, then the Chair of Business Administration, and now Dean of the Division. Her experience of over 20 years of service working in higher education industry has demonstrated her dedication to her faculty, staff, and students' success. Dr. Schrammick's exemplary skills are notable, including skills in academic advising, instructional design, recruiting, team building, and public speaking. I'd like to have you please join me in congratulating her on getting her doctoral degree. Dr. Schrammick, could you please come forward?
Thank you for the recognition, Board. It was an amazing experience over the last three years to get to join the John Roush Program and to learn about best practices across the nation. So I appreciate that opportunity and your recognition. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Dr. Eskamia, would you tell us a little bit about the Kansas State Program? And putting you on the spot here didn't expect a full briefing, but I thought it would be an opportunity to talk a little bit about that program.
That's like asking me to talk about my family. That's easy to do, because they are an extension of my family and have been for over 20 years. First of all, congratulations, Jennifer. We have several graduates now from this program. I don't know, Natalie, do you know how many are besides yourself?
Right now, graduates, there are six from Delmar College and five finishing up dissertations.
Six and five out of three cohorts?
Yes, I'm sorry, two cohorts.
Two cohorts, I'm sorry. I'm already thinking about the next, right? So some years back, we brought, we asked, John Roush is like the preeminent community college guru on the planet, period. Anybody who knows about community colleges and administration and so forth, and that world of higher ed, knows that, and he lives right here in Austin. The evolution of his program from the University of Texas, where I graduated from, Hook 'Em Horns, right Natalie? And so forth, has evolved to, moved to Kansas State. All that being said, he continues to produce leaders from all over the country, all over the world for that matter, in his program that is scattered throughout the country. That being said, we've had two cohorts right here at Delmar College producing future, doctorates and, at the EDD, as an EDD, and producing leaders for the future. That's really it, simply put. And for little old Delmar, I say little old, little Delmar College relative to all the big systems throughout the country that have these cohorts, it's a tremendous honor and opportunity to be tied in with such a group. And Jennifer, to say you're published with George Boggs and move on was just, I can't let that go. If anybody doesn't, if you don't know who George Boggs is, and I understand if you don't, but he is the past, first of all, he's past president emeritus from Palomar College in California. That's a big deal in itself. But he is also the past CEO of the American Association of Community Colleges. He's Walter Buffas's predecessor and has led that organization. And so to be published with such a name is another tremendous honor, congratulations on that. He, by the way, also has Corpus Christi roots. He has family here, and we see him from time to time. George is a good friend. So when you are able to, with this cohort, these 11 Delmar College employees that have been tied into this worldwide, and especially, let's just say, national network and even worldwide network, it's just a tremendous opportunity of bringing the world to Delmar College, sharing who we are, and also getting the experiences of understanding who they are. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing, and again, congratulations. Thank you, Madam Chair, for putting me on the spot. That was easy to do.
Dr. Schrammick, I didn't mean to hijack your presentation, because today is about you, but I know that any chance we can talk about this lifelong learning that we talk about for our students means is significant for us as well. So again, congratulations, and to everybody participating in those cohorts, good work and keep them coming, keep them coming, Dr. Eskamia.
Absolutely.
Now Patricia Benavides Dominguez has another recognition for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Regents. I am honored today to announce that Alyssa Ramirez, Alyssa, will you please come up, please? Is one of our rising stars who works as a coordinator in the early college program, doing the fabulous work of dual credit and working with students out in the high schools. She has been selected to participate in Leadership Corpus Christi, class of 52. The Leadership Corpus Christi is devoted to leadership education and workforce development. She joins many DMC alumni who have completed LCC, and we are excited and we definitely support her journey, and I wanted to recognize her.
Thank you all so much. I'm really excited for this opportunity to learn and grow as a leader and bring what I learned in this program back to not only my department, but to the college as a whole and to all the students that I get to work with. Thank you all.
Good to see you. Thank you so much. Congratulations. And now our student success report. Dr. Halcom is going to join us again.
Supplemental Instruction is a program built around peer-led group study sessions for some of the most challenging at-risk courses at Delmar College. So you might see, we're not talking about at-risk students, we're talking about at-risk courses. Now, what are at-risk courses? They're defined as those courses that you find a lot of D, F, and Ws, withdrawal rates in excess of 30%. So SI provides regularly scheduled, out-of-class, peer-facilitated study sessions for students enrolled in these historically difficult courses. This program has been very popular for our anatomy and physiology courses, but it is utilized for other courses such as psychology. It is voluntary for our students in these courses in which SI is offered. Supplemental Instruction programs can be found at most institutions throughout the country because of continued success of such a program. Now, these SI leaders are hired and trained by our Coordinator of SI, Dr. Stephanie Ding, and I know she's here with us. Stephanie, why don't you, there she, stand up. Yeah. There she is. And she's done a tremendous amount of work. She's worked in SI for over 18 years. Most recently, she assumed the coordinator position in 2022. These peer leaders that she trains have completed the course, such as an A&amp;P course, that they may lead study sessions. And they also attend the faculty members' course as well to see what they are, what information is being conveyed in the courses. Since its inception, we have seen tremendous increase in achievement. Now, over the many years of SI, we've seen on a 4.0 grading scale that there's an increase of .73 of a GPA, and that's quite a bit, very significant increase. And that's of the students who participate in supplemental instruction as opposed to those who do not choose to participate. So generally, we're going to see participants are going to have higher grades, they'll get more As and Bs. They have a lower withdrawal rate than those students who don't participate in SI. And as I mentioned, they will have a higher grade point average than non-participating students. And they found this to be pretty consistent throughout the country, these increases. Now, I included in your packet data from just our spring. I mean, we have data from way back, but that would be another couple hundred pages probably. I didn't think you needed 200 pages of data that Stephanie gave me. So what you have here are bar graphs of some of these successes, but I wanted to make sure you understand how some of our student support services provide and directly connect with achievement, and this is a perfect example. But we found from spring of 2023 that 52% of those who participate in SI earned grades of an A or B compared to 43% of non-participants. And then the final grade point average for spring, it's a little slow going to the next slide, sorry. There we go. The final grade point average was higher once again for those participants, and so we see a 2.7 GPA for SI participants versus a 2.0 GPA. And this is for spring, but I wanted to show you a sample of the great achievements and the great work that is produced from supplemental instruction. And so you can see it's a very worthy program, and our Coordinator, Dr. Stephanie Ding, can be reached at this location, or students can locate her as well if they wish to be involved. If you have any questions, we do have Dr. Ding here today that could answer some of these questions.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Okay. And I want to thank Dr. Ding. She's done a tremendously good job in this. Thank you, Dr. Ding.
Thank you, Dr. Halcom.
Thank you.
Moving on to our college president's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. I'd like to begin by talking about convocation, which took place on August 21st at the Richardson Performance Hall. It was a tremendous group kind of coming back together and on a face-to-face kind of basis, and we were able to talk about all things Delmar as we kicked off for the fall semester. We even had a proposal of marriage in the four-year area. Had Dr. Jim Klein proposed again to his wife after 30 years in front of her, Teresa, both professors here. It was a wonderful thing, as we all gathered around and celebrated with them. That was a fun, fun event that we were happy to participate in with them. Again, it was a great kickoff. I want to thank you all who were in attendance, and it's always a fun part of kicking things off, and I think everybody really appreciated the barbecue afterwards. It's always catered for the event, and we were able to feed the whole college. It's a lot of fun. A few days later, both Chair Scott and I were honored to give Congressman Michael Cloud a tour of the Oso Creek campus. Any comments, Madam Chair, about that particular morning?
We, he was very interested in the facility and in the programs out there. We had actually had this planned a couple of months ago, and he had to cancel at the last minute, so we really appreciate his time and his staff's time in getting him over. He had a busy August, and we're glad that he got to spend a couple hours at Delmar College.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And subsequently, upon the completion of that tour, he was keynote at the Texas Workforce Commission-sponsored event for the South Texas region, and so it just kind of parlayed. It worked out wonderfully, and lots of people at that particular event, and it was a great day. A few days later, I was able to attend the Oso Creek Campus, Corpus Christi Regional Transit Authority's bus stop ribbon-cutting. Sorry, my phone ringer is not off. I apologize. But the ribbon-cutting was well-attended. It was celebrating the two super stops that are located at our, at the, both the south and east portions of the perimeters of the campus, if you haven't seen them. Much thanks to Patricia Benavides Dominguez for serving on the Board. Yes, I'm giving you credit. Don't say no. As a former Board Member of the CCRTA for the great work in moving towards that. Of course, there were some federal grants and some other things that came to pay for those particular facilities. They are, they will withstand anything. Those things are just solid concrete, and these structures are very well-positioned and will provide shelter for those coming and going to the various venues, certainly including our Oso Creek Campus on that side of town. So it was a great event, and I want to thanks the CCRTA for inviting me and allowing me to speak at that event as well. There's one other event in here that I had not posted at the previous event, in the previous board meeting that I wanted to just add in here, if I may, Counselor, it's a lot of fun. I was also the keynote speaker for the convocation at the Flower Bluff Independent School District, and that was a lot of fun, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank Superintendent Velma and others, Chris Steinbrock, the Athletic Director, for inviting me to be the keynote for that convocation. Of course, being, living in the Bluff and knowing there for some time, it was like, again, it was like family, and so it was a lot of fun. But I want you all to know how much we are appreciated by the good folks over at Flower Bluff amongst the other school districts, but I just thought I'd add that to my, to my report, and thank you so much, Madam Chair. That concludes my comments.
Any questions? Nope, no questions. Thank you very much, Dr. Eskamia. We'll move on to our staff reports, and we are going to hear about a proposal for the Workforce Development Center in Aransas County. Delmar has participated in this work for several years now, and there's some movement and some changes afoot, and so Ms. Keys is going to give us that presentation.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Regents. Today, we are seeing the progress, let's see if we can, there we go. Today, we're seeing the progress that has been made over the past two years as it relates to the college's engagement with the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration Grant in Aransas County to bring a Workforce Development Center to the region. This effort was part of the college's strategic goal number two in the present strategic plan, which is to expand and promote educational opportunities throughout the college's service area and seek to recruit both traditional and non-traditional students. The staff report is in part in response to the recent vote by the Aransas County Commissioners' Court to ask the college to accept the transfer of the grant and the existing building improvements located in Rockport to the college. In support of this initiative, representatives of the community in Aransas County are with us today, and I will be introducing some of them in a few moments or later in the report. This report will cover three basic broad topics. First is an overview of the grant and demographics of the region. Second would be budgetary projections, and third, our next steps. The working relationship with Aransas County regarding the EDA grant began in January of 2021 with an award of over $1.7 million to the county to purchase and remodel the Little Bay Primary School located on Highway 35 North in Rockport to become a Workforce Development Center. The college at this time entered into an MOU to provide the programming and operate the center similar to the Northwest Center located in Cal Allen. The overall project totaled $2.138 million, and since then, the college has received SAC COC approval to provide the programs and courses to support credit and continuing Since the awarding of the grant, the college administration and faculty have worked with the county and community to identify various programs and technology that will most benefit the region in developing a skilled and educated workforce. This is the purpose, this is the proposed layout of the various programs such as allied health, industrial technology, building trades, and drafting, entrepreneurship, and journal business, just to name a few. Since Hurricane Harvey devastated the area in 2017, the population of the three-county region that would have been served by the Workforce Development Center has rebounded and is projected to grow, in large part due to the over $60 billion in industrial growth that is in surrounding counties, particularly San Patricio. The slides are slow today. In working with the facility programming consulting, we analyzed the drive time of the population to the Workforce Development Center. This table illustrates that over 40,000 potential students within the ages of 18 to 64 reside within a 30-minute drive time. Assuming less than 2% of this population attends the courses at the center, we can project approximately 800 students will take courses located there. This is using the most conservative projections and excluding the population living west of Highway 37. If you'd like to notice, that's the red column going down to the left, where's so zero to 30 minutes. As you go out to the further right, you can go out for 45 to 60 minutes and project out the population by that group. Visually, the 30-minute drive time is represented in light red as the red portion of the map, and the green portion represents a 40-minute drive time that would be easily located towards Presently, the college serves, the college's service area includes specifically Nuasis, San Patricio, and Aransas Counties. We are including Refugio County in the analysis for this projection. As you can see, we serve over 1,400 students in the last three, in the last year within these three-county area. We also project that we could be drawing as far as Bee County and Goliad, Victoria, Calhoun Counties over in this, to this particular site. Workforce development is a key initiative for the college, community, and surrounding counties. The projected job growth is to outpace the national average and to increase over the next years. The programs we are proposing will also meet the state's new initiatives under House Bill 8 and the Funding Incentive Plan that is being implemented over this next year. And now we can consider the budgets and the projections there, looking at the revenues. Even though facilities programming, projections of the population between 18 and 64 is approximately 800 students. To be very conservative in our budgets, these projections are based on a 200 students enrolling for fall and spring with 100 students in the summer. Projected revenues, including the new House Bill 8 changes, for the year are over $600,000 and grow to over $700,000 by year five. Personnel expenses are calculated based on utilizing one full-time director. As you can see, it goes out. The additional instructional facilities care will be provided by part-time people and I think that. The expenses shown are actual calculations or quotes that we received for this specific site. This shows a net income available for additional use at the center of approximately $250,000 annually as you move across from year one to year five. To be even more conservative, this example reduces revenues by $100,000 for each year. I want to point out that tuition and fees and estimated income from corporate services is always dependent upon how many courses an individual student takes. So what we did here was just to show a most conservative way and in what combination students may or may not take courses, that this would still result in a for-profit or a net revenue income stream of over $140,000 to $200,000 annually. Whatever monies would be left over, I said, didn't quite go over. Here we go. Whatever monies would be left over as far as net revenue or net income would additionally go towards any additional expenses that the site might incur or to buy additional equipment, technology, and advancement of programs over at that site. We left the expenses the same on this projection to just show the most, probably the most conservative view that we could.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
All right. On the estimated tuition and fees, are we using our current tuition and fee level? Or are we anticipating an increase in tuition in future years?
We took the existing, the tuition fees, the tuition for 2023, and we added $2. Projected, our policy provides for $1 per year, and we added the $1 per year going out with a projected slight increase in enrollment.
All right.
We also used an average of less than eight classes per semester, eight hours per student, which is the part-time rate, part-time enrollment.
When are we looking at having our first classes?
Well, if everything goes as planned, we projected that it could be available as the fall of '24, and at the latest, of spring of '25. Okay. Thank you. And now for the opportunity before us. Aransas County Commissioners' Court voted August 28th to ask Delmar College to accept the transfer of ownership the transfer of ownership of the property and assignment of the EDA grant. Additionally, the U.S. Department of Commerce Development or Economic Development Administration, or the EDA, supports this transfer. It should be noted that the grant completion date is of January of '26 with a one-year extension is possible. The details of this proposal is to transfer the 16,000-square-foot building with acreage, approximately $50,000 remaining with the county, and $700,000 with the EDA for completion of the project. The college anticipates that the building remodel can be completed by August of 2024 and at the latest, January of 2025. The Workforce Development Center initiative has broad support by the Aransas County Commissioners' Court, Judge Garza, the business community, and is those represented by the Aransas County Partnership of Economic Development Corporation. At this time, I would like to invite Jeff Strostrum, President of the Aransas County Partnership for Economic Development Corporation, to come forward. Jeff?
Good afternoon, and thank you, Lenora. Madam Chair, Regents, Dr. Eskamia, it is a privilege and a pleasure to be here in front of you today. I have been, they asked me to come lead the Aransas County Partnership a little over a year ago. That follows a 23-year track record as the founding president of the Galveston Economic Development Partnership and over 30 years of economic development experience along the coastal front. I'm excited about this region, I'm excited about Aransas County, and I am excited about continuing to strengthen the relationship between our county, our business development efforts, the workforce development efforts that you have such a legacy in, and seeing the successful completion and execution of this Workforce Development Center. As president, I do have, I have our existing Chair, Jatim Bakhter, our incoming Chair, Chair-Elect, Ms. Nancy Bolting, and I think everybody knows John Jackson, but he's the immediate past Chair. And I have to say, for John Jackson, I think it was in a period less than three weeks when this grant was originally brought to the table, he went throughout the Aransas County community and raised the $400,000 local match, and it's that experience that we bring to the table today to tell you that we are committed to staying on board and being a meaningful partner for the completion of this project and the successful execution of this very critical tool for our economic development toolbox into the future. The last thing, Lenora told me to be short, I only thought I knew what the definition of perseverance was when I came to Rockport. Now I've met it, and she and her team have been phenomenal, so kudos to you, and so excited to be working with you into the future. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, sir, and thank you all for being here today.
Thank you very much, Jeff, and your whole entire team and contingent from Rockport. It's been a real pleasure working with the group from Aransas County. I have to say, I've never seen the county come together so much as we've had this experience over the last two years. The recovery over there, devastation from Hurricane Harvey was very rough, very tough to see, and what you've seen here is the community coming together, initiating around a workforce development center, and to see how it can help their, their community to grow and through education and really through partnership across the bridge and across this whole region to help develop a workforce that's really highly trained. So, thank you. And now, just next steps. Get jumped on, there we go. The next step is a legal review, which Augie will lead through our attorneys with Aransas County and the EDA, and they've already had one meeting. The EDA is requesting letters of commitment and documentation, and that will all be worked through, through legal review over the next month. What we are proposing is to come back to you in October for a possible action item in consideration, and at this time, I'm open for any additional questions.
Thanks so much for your work on this, and again, to the folks representing Aransas County for their work on this as well. Are there questions from the Board?
I've got a couple.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, first one, there's no use of taxing district property tax funding in this project, correct?
That's correct.
There is no debt being incurred by the college in this project?
That's correct.
Okay. So, the building is being funded by private donations from the community and the EDA grant?
That's correct.
Okay, and then, operations is funded by expected tuition and reimbursements from the state for people getting certificates or degrees?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we've established a baseline of how many students we have, so moving forward, we will be able to see if it is adding students in aggregate or if it is cannibalizing students from already existing programs?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so, we will be able to adjust that as time goes on to see if we need to make any changes, if the program needs to get bigger or smaller based on real data?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, sounds perfect.
Thank you. Just to be clear, any other questions or comments?
No, my, my, my last comment is, I really want to thank the community from Aransas County for being here and, and working with us. You know, I think when I first heard about this, that was my first question, is what kind of participation is there from the community, and it seems quite extensive, and I know this will only work if we have a partner, and we are a partner, and so I want you to know that we see it that way, and we look forward to working with you in partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Dr. Babaly?
I applaud the leadership, the commitment, and the vision of all the parties involved. I'm so impressed with, you know, being a first-year Regent. This is what I signed up here for, is to look at how our vision becomes a practice, a mission to our communities at large, and I applaud the leadership over there, the four of you represented here, your vision, Mr. President, and the Board of Trustees, and Board of Regents, and all the communities involved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Eskamia, the, Mr. Loeb's comments kind of were a lead-in to, to comment or a request that I have. As we, as we develop this, if staff can be prepared to show us how they're going to account for this over the long term, so that when questions are asked, when we do need to look at, at, at the performance of the Workforce Development Center moving forward, to make sure that it doesn't, it's probably not going to be in a legal document, but we want to make sure that we have the information segregated and, and reportable so that we can look at performance over the long term for this center and for what we're doing. And it's because it's outside of our taxing district, so I think we have to be very cognizant of the, the funds that are spent. It's obviously in our service area and an important part of our service area, but, but that reporting and that, that segregation of accounting, I think, is going to be important going forward.
So, yes, ma'am, and I, I would like to respond by saying that some of the good, some of the other things that weren't, or that we know, that we assume as, as staff here is that we've done a version of this before, albeit in our tax base, which makes a difference. So, we've learned by opening the Northwest Center out in Cal-Allen how these centers can act, and I'm getting the affirmation out there from staff because we've learned a whole lot. And so, this is a different scenario, for sure, and it's going to be an interesting scenario, unique for us in some ways, but familiar in others. We, we, we will keep that in mind, we will absolutely, Lenora and I will work to establish those criteria, criteria for, for, for these types of measurements, and we'll bring them back to you, absolutely. Again, and, and I, and I would say what's also different is the, is the level of commitment specifically from the community. This is different, and this is to be applauded, and it says, well, it, it says it all right there. I think that's what, that's what we have to, to work with, and that, that'll be the unique, one of the unique aspects of this, of this venture as we move ahead, but you can, you can be assured that we will bring to you prior to anything, to even getting started, what those criteria will look like.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Turner?
So, this is, so, this is strictly going to be a workforce development center, not a transfer program type.
I'm sorry, what?
So, this is strictly workforce credentials, not transfer credentials. So, this is for those gaining their certificates and going out and working, not so much focusing on working and being a community college in Rockport, correct?
We will offer all sorts of courses. Within your AAS degrees, there are always five Gen Ed courses that are required, and we will offer those five academic courses. There are some academic programs that we consider academic that will also be offered over there. Particularly, the beginnings example would be a Level One certificate in instrumentation, which is a credit program.
Will we have full flexibility to offer any programs we want? We're calling it a workforce development center, but that, that doesn't limit us in what we can offer, is that correct?
That's correct, and what we consider workforce programs is all levels of education.
Okay. Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Again, we'll see this back for action at our October meeting, so we look forward to that, that final presentation, and thank you all again for coming, really appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
All right, we are going to move our agenda around, since Regent Abert was able to be with us, so we're going to move to our regular agenda item, and we'll look at our discussion and possible action for our tax rate, our tax levy and tax exemption, so items four, five, and six. So, I'm going to give staff a chance to pull all of that up and get that ready to go. Mr. Garcia, whenever you're ready, whenever our slides are ready.
Yes. So, thank you, Madam Chair. The college has complied with the truth and taxation requirements for the purpose of adopting the proposed MNO and debt service tax rate. The college is now asking for the Board's approval for the action item to adopt the proposed 2024 tax rates. And by the way, we, we had already gone through these slides earlier this morning, so that no changes have been made since then.
All right, so there is a, Chair has opened for an action to adopt our O and M and debt tax rates as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and second by Mr. Krul. Did I hear that correctly? Did I hear that correctly? Okay, good, thank you. Yes. Any other questions or discussion on that motion? Is there any public comment on that motion? If not, all those in favor of adopting the O and M and debt tax rates as presented, please raise your hand. Regent Abert, there we go, thank you so much. We have a unanimous vote in favor of that motion. Moving on to item number five.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. So, with the just recently adopted 2024 MNO and debt service tax rates, the college is now seeking Board approval to levy the tax rates on taxable real, personal, and mixed properties located within our district. This action item will provide the funding necessary to cover the annual fiscal year 2024 principal and interest on the college's bond obligations, and it will help cover in part the recently Board-approved operating budget for fiscal year 2024.
Thank you, sir. There's a Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the order as presented in our packets. Dr. Adami made that motion, second by Dr. Babaly. Is there any discussion on the order or on that motion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of the order as presented, please raise your hand. Any opposed? The Regent Abert, there we go, thank you. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Item number six.
The college has an action item for the approval of the proposed property tax exemptions. The listed property tax exemptions on the screen provide qualifying taxable property owners in our taxing district a certain level of property tax relief. Here are a few tidbits about the college's proposed exemptions from the lens view of the property owner. The qualified charitable organizations provide a tax exemption if the property is used for religious, charitable, scientific, literary, or educational purpose. The qualified disabled veterans provide a tax exemption ranging from $5,000 to $12,000 for a disabled veteran homeowner. The homestead exemption provides a tax exemption valued at $5,000 on a person's residential homestead. The last one, the college is also proposing an additional tax exemption to a person of 65 years of age or older, or a person who is under the age of 65 who qualifies for disability insurance benefits. The exemption is valued at $50,000. For more information about the property tax exemptions, please contact your respective county appraisal office to determine how you may qualify for an exemption. College is now seeking your approval for this action item.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. There is a resolution in our packets, so the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution for tax exemptions as presented. Thank you, motion by Mr. Garz, is there a second? Second by Dr. Babaly. Any discussion or questions on that motion? Is there any public comment on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of the resolution on tax exemptions as presented, please raise your hand. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your continued support.
Thanks for your indulgence. Wanted to make sure that Regent Abert had the opportunity to participate in those action items, and she'll stay with us as long as she can. Now, we're going to move back to our staff reports, and we're going to ask Dr. Halcom to come up and talk about our Bachelor of Applied Science in Organizational Management and Leadership. Do you have any opening comments, Mr., Dr. Eskamia?
Only that, thank you, Madam Chair, only that this is an item, again, a unique item of our curriculum that really offers unique services to a niche group that would otherwise experience, let me see, that we have seen through experience have a difficult opportunity. That didn't make sense. But for this experience right here, or this opportunity, there's a group of students in our workforce programs that would have, would otherwise have a very difficult, difficult, have a lot of difficult, I can't talk right now, I apologize, so I'm just going to let the team talk.
There we go.
I am, I, for other reasons I'm not going to talk about, I'm running out of juice right now, but I'm just going to let, I'm going to let, this is a good thing, okay? That's what I'm trying to say.
Dr. Halcom and Dr. Schramick, would you all please give us the presentation?
You explained it well. What else can I say?
No, I didn't.
Go get a Coke.
Madam Chair, Regents, and Dr. Eskamia, in April of 2023, we presented to you a proposal to have another bachelor's degree at our institution, a Bachelor of Applied Science in Organizational, see, you did it to me, I can't even say organizational, a Management and Leadership. Today, we will do a refresher for you, since it has been some time since we discussed it, and we hope to go forward the next month or two for a vote. Dr. Schramick and a team of other Deans, Chairs, and faculty have worked diligently on this project. Dr. Schramick, Schramick, sorry, we'll start the discussion this afternoon. See, you did it to me, I can't even say anything right now, Dr. Eskamia.
Good day, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, again. So, today, we'll be talking about the Bachelor of Applied Science in Organizational Management and Leadership, which I'll refer to as the BAS OML. So, the purpose of the proposed BAS OML is to provide an opportunity for students who have completed an Associate of Applied Science degree to complete a baccalaureate degree in a targeted occupation at Delmar College. On the most recent targeted occupations list from the Coastal Bend, they showed that jobs in general management and operations management were plentiful, was very high on the list with over 4,000 jobs available and with an average hourly earning of over $45 an hour. And so, we wanted to provide this opportunity for our students who are, who are completing AAS degrees, Associates of Applied Science degrees, to move into a stackable BAS OML degree, and to make it both affordable and accessible to them. to move into a stackable BAS OML degree, and to make it both affordable and accessible to them. And this would allow them to complete that degree, adding business knowledge to their technical skills that they've learned in their AAS degrees. So the proposed plan for the BAS OML is that the students complete their AAS degree, which is typically comprised of 15 semester credit hours of core or general education classes, plus 45 semester credit hours of technical courses. Once they've completed that AAS, then that AAS can stack seamlessly into the new BAS OML degree. They would complete an additional 27 hours of core classes, general academic classes, and then an additional 33 semester credit hours in the major courses of the BAS OML, which we'll show in just a moment. So that would be a total of 120 credit hours for that BAS OML degree. At Delmar College, we do have over 55 AAS degrees, which you can see some of them listed, not all of them are listed. But what we looked for was, did this degree provide a career pathway for those AAS students to move forward? And so we show here some pathways to career advancement. So for example, if a student was to complete a welding degree, an associate's degree in welding, and then go to work in the field, completing the BAS OML would open up doors for them to both middle management and upper management in positions like a foreman, a project manager, a plant manager, and owner. And you can see similar career pathways for things like fire and police and process technology. Over to the right, you can also see some of the area employers that we received feedback for that had positive feedback on our proposal. Now, when the committee was first investigating this idea and deciding how we wanted to bring it forward, it was important to us to get stakeholder feedback. And so one of the things that we did was to survey students who were currently in their AAS degrees. And we sent surveys out, we had 281 students respond, which was a 15% response rate on the survey. 84% of those students stated that they would consider enrolling in the BAS OML program. We also surveyed workforce partners. 41 workforce partners answered the survey, with 78% of those workforce partners responding that they felt this degree would be valuable to their current and future employees, 63% of them noting that they had tuition assistance available for their employees, and 53% responding that they had current employees needing a bachelor's degree in order to advance their careers. We also talked with our workforce advisory committees, secondary institutions, A&amp;M Corpus Christi, A&amp;M Kingsville, and Delmar College employees, and we were able to receive positive feedback about the initiative. In addition to quantitative feedback, we also wanted to hear from students as far as qualitative feedback about how they felt about this proposed degree. And what we found was that in the survey, they emphasized the importance that the degree could help them to advance their skills and advance their life by creating new career opportunities that would bring them economic mobility. And so we did have good feedback from students that they were very interested in seeing this degree move forward. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Halcom.
So several other colleges offer this degree. You can see Brazos Port, Laredo, Midland, Odessa, and South Texas. Their enrollment is fairly good, and we have not received any other updates on this. But you can see, South Texas has 521 enrollees, well, actually, they have in 2021, 925, and the average is 521. And so I anticipate our enrollment will be fairly good, and that you do have a slide in there where it shows a proposed enrollment number. Texas A&amp;M University, Corpus Christi, and A&amp;M Kingsville offer the Bachelor of Applied Arts and Sciences, and they do not have the Organizational Management and Leadership degree, as you can see. We're finding, by looking at transfer numbers, not many students from Delmar are really transferring to these programs. We are, however, working with Kingsville and Corpus Christi to develop a good pathway for some of these other Bachelor of Applied Arts and Sciences, but they do not have the same degree that we are proposing now. So what are some of the learning objectives for the course? Understanding, executing management and leadership principles, exploring information technology, implementing traditional and digital marketing plans, reviewing accounting methods, implementing financial decisions, analyzing operational business law concepts, forming and presenting strategic business proposals, and applying soft skills. And so the program will address all of those. Now, on the degree plan for the bachelor's level, these are the courses that you see on the screen that would be in that degree plan, marketing for managers, accounting, finance, and you can read a lot of those yourself. But that will be on the actual degree plan that students will need to complete. Now, do we have people to teach these courses that I just showed you? Yes, we do. Now, according to the coordinating board in our SAC COC, faculty, in order to teach these bachelor's courses, must have a master's degree and a minimum of 18 semester credit hours in the discipline. We presently have faculty with the required credentials. Now, we do have one person that retired this summer. We anticipate putting an add-out to make sure they meet these requirements as well. So I don't anticipate adding more faculty if we start this program at this time, because we do have many that can do that. Now, all the courses planned right now would be online using our learning management system, which currently is Canvas. So this is what we're guessing, anticipating, is that in year one, we might have 30 students, and then it would increase up to about 90 by year five. Of course, this is an estimate. We hope for more than that. I would love to have many more and then say we need more faculty, you know? But anyway, this is the budget that we put forward back in April. You can see with tuition and fees, that covers, just with tuition and fees, the anticipated direct expenditures. Now, this does not include the House Bill 8 component at this time. We have to still calculate all the components. We would receive state funding or from House Bill 8, the success points, I think it's $3,500 per student who graduates with a bachelor's degree. But then also, the student would need to complete an associate degree, which that's an additional amount. Now, something came up at one time, could they transfer from earning an associate degree and still get transfer points into a bachelor's? And we found out, no, they couldn't within our own institution. If a student transferred with an associate degree to a university, then we would get the transfer dollars, but we do not get it when it's within our own, and that applies to our nursing as well. So we're in the process of calculating, Business Offices helping with this and calculating all the particular aspects of House Bill 8, which we do not have every bit of information. But you can see, the cost is not dramatic here. Total direct expenditures are anticipated pretty low compared to even just receiving tuition and fees. So I think that this is not an expensive program. I think we can generate quite a bit of revenue, actually, from this. And then this was what we anticipated with the old scenario, and, you know, we're looking at how House Bill 8 would play a part in that. But once again, we would receive funding for those bachelor's awards and also the associate degree, stackable, we would make it stackable. Sorry, this is kind of slow switching, I apologize. So what are the benefits of having this degree? And I think, you know, many have discussed it already, our Associate of Applied Science, we have 55 of those programs. Now, those students could take the bachelor's level. So many of the technical degrees do not have transferability, really, to other degrees, and so many students want the advanced degree. And I mentioned before that we do have staff here also that would like an advanced degree as well. So this is a win-win for our students. And of course, we provide an affordable option. You know, we charge the same as we do for associate degree. And therefore, I think we can have more students in our community complete the higher-level degree.
That's per state law.
Yeah.
The tuition cap is per state law, so just so you know.
Exactly, but it's a win for our students to do that. We also would increase enrollment in core courses, because on the degree plan, I didn't show you, I just showed you the specific courses that relate to organizational management and leadership, but there are core courses that would increase, and that increases our funding as well by increasing enrollment in those areas. So we want to add business knowledge to complement the technical skills. So we have many students that they learn the technical skills, they go out in the workforce, they get paid very well, but then they might want to become a manager. They need those business skills. And I would really encourage those students that want to go higher in their companies to get this particular degree. I think it's very important that we do so. So what are the next steps? Of course, we would need your approval. Today, we're just refreshing what we talked about in April. And we want to come back, according to when Madam Chair and the rest of the board want to have it on the agenda for a vote. And then if you approve it, we would go to the coordinating board and then submit a sub-C to the SAC COC. Now, I had a question recently, what about marketing? Okay? That was a specific question I received, I think, from Regent Scott some time ago. So I would like Jeff Olson to come forward and talk a little bit about how we would do marketing for this program. Jeff?
Thank you, Dr. Halcom. So I was just going to briefly touch on the marketability of the program, and then if approved, we'll have a full marketing plan around this program. But I should start by thanking Dr. Halcom and Dr. Schrammick for all the due diligence that's been put into this, because the roadmap is right there in what you've just seen. We did a survey, interest was assessed, audiences were identified. If you look at the presentation that was just given, you'll see that two of the primary audiences are current students that we have in those 55 stackable associates degrees, and also all the recent graduates of those programs. So we're going to be marketing to those students and trying to get them to go ahead and continue for the bachelor's. We're also going to be, of course, marketing to new students, and we're going to do so with the help of our new CRM. That's our new marketing automation tool. It's a customer relationship management tool that comes with our anthology implementation. It's called Reach, and it's going to enable us to really effectively connect the marketing efforts that Delmar College has with all of the work that Patricia's group does on the recruiting side. So we'll have automated communication flows going to anybody that looks at one of our ads and clicks on it or fills out a form. It's really going to help us get people engaged more and find out more about what the program is all about. We also have a couple of other ways that we're really going to get the message out. I think there's a powerful media story to be told here also. You know, there's so much growing industry in this area, and we need more managers, we need more leaders, industry needs that. And so this is a program that's really going to empower people that work in those industries to thrive and to move into those management positions. And then on top of that, employer outreach, and they've already been contacted and talked to, but the employers can help us identify the employees that might be right to really get into these programs. So we're going to have a big integrated marketing approach to this, but we see a very clear path ahead. And looking at the numbers of some of the other schools that have these programs, we think it's going to be a big hit. Thank you. Any questions on marketing?
If I can just, the CRM, that tool, and to be able to maximize our customer relations M module, management system, CRM, right? To be able to maximize it, as an example, the way Jeff is explaining it is that they would do a social media outreach and so forth. And whenever anybody would ping back and show any kind of interest, those people would be captured out of that. So they'd cast this big, right, big wide net of opportunity, and then pull from that immediately and contact them while they're interested and while things are sizzling, so to speak. And that whole maximizing that component of our anthology system is really, really exciting for things like this, for things like the BSN, and countless other things around the college.
For sure, it's a game changer, and we're not just doing it for this program. This is going to be for every academic program that we have at Delmar. And we've been working on a new strategic marketing plan that's going to do exactly that. We're going to figure out how we can use this tool more powerfully to serve all of the programs here. So that'll be rolling out soon, more to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. So we would like to start this program in fall of 2024. We would need to get all the documentations into the SAC COC no later than January 1st to be able to start in fall of 2024. So I would like to know if you have any questions. We would like to be able to come back at some point to get a vote to approve it, but I'd like to know if there are any unanswered questions that we need to address at that time, or now.
I don't have a, go ahead.
Sorry. I just have some comments, though, you know? We need to make sure, I'm absolutely convinced that time has come for this program at Delmar College. In fact, it's long overdue. Having been the provost of Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi in the past, and now an advisor to several institutions globally, this is a global imperative. This is an intercultural imperative for our students. So stepping into any management role, they need to be well steeped in the cultural demographics that are sweeping this country, the psychographics, the quickly changing psychographic profile of this country, and our connection to international and regional institutions and corporations in terms of trade, commerce. The port is playing a great role in that aspect, the port of Corpus Christi. And I think Delmar College is a strategic partner for preparing our students into this program and beyond. And I think I'm absolutely thrilled that we do have this ready to go forward. And I strongly urge our regents to consider that timing of this program, and we need to quickly endorse it and move it forward. And I compliment all of you to come up with this program. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, sir, Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, I'm the same mindset as Dr. Babaly, and I'm excited about this particular, I want to say, initiative. I just think that there's a lot of students, particularly on the economic disadvantaged side, that don't feel that they're going to have the resources to try abide at two different paths. If they feel they have leadership skills and they'd like to take the classes or the curriculum that it takes to be in a leadership role, they feel they may not have the dollars to be able to wait that long in order to be able to get some income derived from that particular training, they can choose to do something in applied sciences, start to earn income, and realize that they didn't waste time, because they can still go on and stack additional credentials onto what they already learned, and eventually assume a leadership role somewhere. And so again, I think this is going to, regardless of the 90 students that we're thinking, I think that's a very conservative number. I think that 200 or 300 students that might make a decision to do something, to go get some training, to get some college hours, is going to be a lot greater than those 90 students that we're conservatively projecting might take advantage of this type of program. So I'm really excited about this particular initiative, and I think it's going to be a huge hit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Regent Garcia, I appreciate it.
Well, I'm surprised that Mr. Loeb didn't say it, so I'm going to say it. You should also look in your marketing plan at those companies that offer tuition reimbursement locally and make sure that they're a part of our target market. Right, Mr. Loeb?
Absolutely. And let's make a list of the ones that don't offer tuition reimbursement and go talk to them about the benefits to them and their business of investing in their employees. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think this is great. We could vote right now, if it were on the agenda to vote right now. I would also say, you know, I had a brief conversation with somebody.
I, I would also say, you know, I, I had a, a brief conversation with somebody in management at the university about how this also creates an opportunity for us to create a pool of public, Masters of Public Policy, Business Administration and Public Administration candidates, and I, I hope we work with them to tie our graduates from this program in with, with them and any other program that's interested. Because that's how people can go from general workforce to senior management. And this program has been the missing piece in giving people that pathway to, you know, starting out with us, getting something where they can get a good paying job to start, but giving them the potential to become professional level management and not just stall out by not having a bachelor's degree. So I think, I think working with the HR people at our, our big partners is important. And I also think one thing to look at is, I, I had this conversation just last week with somebody where they said, yeah, you know, I went, I went to Delmar and took some business classes to help me out with my small business, but I didn't really, you know, I didn't do enough to graduate. I think there's an opportunity with some of the, the classes that we're offering to create some certificate programs for people that kind of, you know, want to come in and take some accounting and marketing and general business management classes, but don't really have the time or the inclination to do a full program. I, I think your course guide is, is, creates some good opportunities for that as well. So, but no, I, I think this is fantastic. I think, you know, I, I heard a lot of stories when, when the universities put together their engineering programs, it was because we were considered to be a hardship place for people to get transferred to. Because we didn't have an engineering master's program or bachelor's program where people could move up. This is an opportu, this, I think, solves that same issue on a lot of the technical staff where they essentially have to start over to get a bachelor's degree and be able to move up. And I, this is great and they can do it at home and they can do it online. And so this is fantastic. I have no complaints. It's wonderful to hear about marketing in one of these discussions as well. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Regent Loeb.
I do have one question and then want to talk about timing. The question is, is there a way that we can do a couple of projections, not for every one of, of these potential degree programs or the, the current associates degrees, but can we take a couple of examples and show the potential wage benefit to the student or to the, the graduate in, in hospitality management? What can a bachelor's degree potentially earn you in occupational health and safety, whatever it is? I think a couple of examples of what, what the potential salary is for jobs that require a bachelor's degree. So I think that might be a good, a good piece of information to have. And then my comment about timing is, it sounds like we're ready. So as soon as you and Dr. Eskemia can agree to get it on the next agenda, then we're ready to go.
Okay. Thank you, Regent Scott.
Good, good job. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Regents.
All right. If you liked that one, you'll love our next one as well. Our next staff report is also Dr. Halcom and we're going to talk about a proposal between Delmar College and the Texas Tech Huckabee College of Agriculture.
Architecture.
Architecture, sorry. Sorry, I was going to say, the Texas Tech Huckabee College of Architecture for a potential degree program here.
I love that you said agriculture because I've been doing that. I caught myself doing that today and I love that you did it too. That's great. So today, we are going to give you a basic overview of a potential partnership with Texas Tech University Huckabee School of Architecture. Our college has talked about this for years. You know, when we planned the cornerstone programs for Oso Creek, architecture was a big one. And the possibility of partnering with Texas, Texas Tech was in everyone's mind at that time. Now, I have Ms. Laura Wright here today. She's the Director of the Architecture Program. She has worked on this for years. I, what, 2012, 2013? You've been working.
It's about, it's closer to 10 years than it is anything else. I think it's actually closer to 11 that we've been working on.
So, you know, I have her here today because she, this is, she lives this, you know? She lives it. So she can fill you in on every detail. And we're still in negotiation with Texas Tech, so there might be some things that, you know, we may not be able to discuss because we're in negotiation with them. So we're proposing that Delmar College and Texas Tech University Huckabee College of Architecture come together at the new Oso Creek Campus in Corpus Christi to create that two plus two architecture program, resulting in a Bachelor of Science in Architecture degree for the area. Texas Tech would give the bachelor's degree, we don't. But we would provide an opportunity for those students to earn a bachelor's in this entire region and that's what's critical for our community. So we want to try to start this in fall of 2024. We want to house the program on the first floor of the STEM building. You've all taken tours, you know how fabulous the architecture first floor is. We have also impressed other people that have come to our campus. We have had Texas Tech come and I think Laura can tell you, they just loved it. They loved what we have. And so this program would be directed and managed by our program director. Texas Tech would pay for the program director to oversee it and they're asking for Laura Wright to do that. And then we would have our junior and senior classes in architecture here on the Oso Creek Campus and they'd be taught by adjunct faculty hired by Texas Tech. And then what's good about this, that they will have our people teach the core courses and those can be reversed, transferred back to our associate degree. So there's many things that like Laura's area offers that's stackable. Now, no, we wouldn't get credit for the bachelor's degree, but that would encourage our enrollment to get more of those high demand areas. And she does have high demand areas under architecture and the drafting and some of those. So this would be a win-win for everyone, especially for our students in the community. So I'm going to let Laura talk about, now she put just 2014, but I think it's been longer than that. So she's going to talk about, she's the expert here. So I'm going to let her take over on this presentation and she can answer almost everything. Go ahead, Laura.
Thank you for having me here today. Yeah, we've been working on this for quite some time. When we started discussing it with the leadership in both institutions at the time, we initially went up and traveled to Lubbock, probably back in 2013, Dr. Eskemia, Dr. Figaro and myself, and spoke with the Texas Tech President and Provost at the time. And it was favorable and it, they had asked us to develop a feasibility study, which we had and started negotiations and had updated it and, but it also, in that time, we had begun our bond and construction of the new campus. In the timeframe that this has happened, the, the College of Architecture at Texas Tech had a, a change in leadership and recently they've had another change in leadership about a year or two ago. And so as we've been updating the feasibility studies and we've persevered and kept up these conversations, we have been able to move forward with some momentum in the last year on this program. Some things like COVID had allowed us to think out of the box in the way of distance learning and to be able to share resources and things like that. So I had made a trip up to Lubbock every year, every, every so often in meeting with a colleague up there who's been a, a strong advocate and with the existing dean, which is now Dean Upay Flukeeger, who came down in last March to visit the facilities. In that timeframe, not only did he see our wonderful facilities, which were incredibly impressive, I mean, this is an example of you build it, they will come. And, but he also got to see examples of the student work, which to him had grown and exceeded expectations. So the student work said a lot to Texas Tech and the students also had an opportunity to visit with Dean Flukeeger and Associate Dean Derek Wade. And that also impressed them because the students pressed to them how important this program is to them and this community. So after that meeting that we held at the Oso Creek Campus, the next steps were to create a business plan, an implementation plan to get us there. And so I had been working with Associate Dean Derek Wade with Texas Tech College of Architecture over this past summer on a business plan that is almost finalized. And so a lot of things with the implementation of this program have been coming up and working through a lot of the details to get us where we're at now. So. So some of the benefits, and there are many, of course, the biggest one was that our students could receive a Bachelor of Science in Architecture degree locally without having to leave the Coastal Bend region. This is an opportunity that was not available to me as a Corpus Christi High School graduate and I went off to architecture school. So it, it will be the furthest south Bachelor degree and it would also service the Rio Grande Valley. We'd be educating future architects and employees in other aspects of the building industry. An architectural degree can reach into other aspects such as project management and construction. It will develop and strengthen a, a close partnership and bond with a tier-one Texas university. It will help us build relationships with other building industry partners. It will increase enrollment in numerous ways. I've spoken with my colleagues down in the valley and they're excited about this opportunity. Delmar has the potential to garner some more enrollment. Some of the similar programs down in McAllen and in Brownsville may not have all of the classes necessary to enter year three in an architecture school. So they could take those classes that they're needing or that they're lacking with us. As well as it would increase enrollment in the core classes because we are proposing that the all, the rest of the core be taken at Delmar through Delmar by Delmar faculty. And that also reduces the amount of classes that Texas Tech would need to directly teach here. They would just be teaching the architecture classes. It would also, we have another opportunity to increase enrollment. This year, I believe the enrollment or incoming freshmen at the Texas Tech Huckabee College of Architecture is 358 students. There is only 128 spots going into year two. And so they see it also as an opportunity to be able to provide and allow students to continue their education from their program and keep going without being set back a year and to reapply to their program. Another advantage is Texas Tech is interested in our local industries and it's an opportunity to provide a home base for graduate studies in sustainability and building resiliency in construction technologies. So they would be able to explore and possibly develop a new graduate program specific that because this, the Coastal Bend region would be primed to study those things. And the most important is that we are providing a direct pathway for students to receive an architectural license. To get a license, an architect's license in the state of Texas, you have to have a professional accredited degree. That can be a five-year degree or a four plus two, total of six, or it'd be two plus two plus two. Then you have three years of documented internship and then you have to sit for the architectural registration exam. But this gets us one step closer so that students don't have to leave the region to realize this dream. So some of the goals that we have set, the, the minimum, we wanted to be conservative. We'd like to begin fall of 2024, offering third-year courses. And the minimum would be 10 students. However, we had surveyed the students and we surveyed past graduates who have, who are working locally, who could not leave the region. And so we have 26 students that could potentially go into year three. We projected 20. And then in the following year, those students would progress into fourth year and we'd get a new class for third year, getting us up to 30. And we're hoping at the end of five years, we would have 60 total students in the program, which would be capacity. And we're hoping that we have 100 total graduates by the end of year five with this degree. And that 20% of those students would go on to seek their masters in Lubbock or preferably Lubbock. But we're also, who knows, maybe in that time, there may be other opportunities where they don't have to go to Lubbock to get that. That would be awesome. So again, we have a potential cohort of 26 interested students. That's two full class sections that could enter year three. This year, we have had an increase of enrollment by about 13% from fall of last year. And so we have 27 new students that entered our freshman year in Architectural Design One. That's not everybody in the program, that's just everybody in Architectural Design. Architectural education is structured by architectural design studios and it starts day one, their freshman year, Design One in the fall, Design Two in the spring, Design Three the following year, Design Four. You have to successfully complete one before moving on to the other. And if you don't, you have to sit out a year. So that is our structure. So that allows us to get some pretty good projection numbers. And our retention rate going into second year is about 70%. Part of that is, you know, students still taking other courses or developmental education or we have students who are also on the architectural technology pathway, which is a workforce-focused pathway. So the number of active students, those enrolled in design who are following that pathway actively is, we currently have 70. That's first and second year. And then we have an additional 27 students who are in the Architectural Technology Associates of Applied Science. Any questions?
I do have a question, obviously for Dr. Eskemia or Dr. Halcom, but what is the potential action that you would be asking the board to take on this matter? Is this a SACs accreditation review? Is this a proven MOU? What potential action do you have?
It's not a SACC COC issue because it would be an issue for Texas Tech, but not us. They would have to get approval for operating at our site. So I guess potentially it could be their issue.
Yep, for, for the SACs piece of it all, for the accreditation piece of it all. Ours is already covered in that regard, but what we would be asking you to approve would be an agreement of specified details that we would bring to you around the parameters of that agreement for, for the college to enter.
So it's a little bit more than, than a normal articulation agreement, which you normally sign on your own.
Yes.
Because it would be housed at our facility?
Yes, it's, it's a much bigger, bigger undertaking. It's a longer-term undertaking that we felt was necessary to bring to you all. Because it brings in another entity of higher education and so forth that would live with us, we felt that, or believe that it would be important to bring here. It exists at El Paso, did you talk about that? I don't know if you touched about that. This, this program does exist at another community college. This program does exist at another community college at El Paso and has been in place for 15 years or more. I think it might be 18, closer to 20, if I'm not mistaken. And so as such, a long-term agreement with another entity with a very specified purpose and a very specified degree, and I really would like to really enforce to those listening out there, this is not Del Mar College's four-year degree, like we were talking earlier. This is separate and apart from, it's a whole different concept. It brings in a partner for a long-term, a long-term relationship and a very prestigious, very, I mean, just a very powerful university to have a presence here, so that's why.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Well, we have a couple first. Hang on a second. Mr. Kroll and Dr. Turner first.
Well, I have a couple of questions. Have we explored, or there are other architectural schools, colleges in Texas, I assume, at UT and A&amp;M. Have we explored similar programs with them? No interest, or?
Yes, we have, and no, they don't have the interest.
They don't have the interest. Okay. You touched on licensing. I'm an engineer, so maybe a little bit different, but the, in order to get the engineering licenses, you've got to go to an A-BIT accredited college. And I'm assuming there's something similar. Have either you or Texas Tech touched base with appropriate entities to assure that kids, when they get out of here, they can get a license?
Yes. Architecture schools are accredited by the National Architecture Accrediting Board. And Texas Tech is a NAB accredited school, so they would be bringing that accreditation. It'd be there.
I mean, there may be some difference because they're teaching it here. I mean, I would just want to make sure that that loop is closed because I've had some people who have attended non-accredited engineering schools and then have had difficulty getting their PE license.
As a tech alum, maintaining accreditation is very, very important to me and others. But I've served on committees when I was a graduate student on that board. It's done every five years, and they're going to be coming up again for accreditation. And I've offered to serve on that committee. When I had worked for Texas Tech in facilities, planning, construction, I did projects for NAB accreditation, so it's definitely something we're familiar with.
All right. And the other point is architects and engineers need to work closely together on projects, albeit sometimes with diverse interests. But so there should be some potential for some coordination with the engineering schools at A&amp;M, Corpus Christi, A&amp;M Kingsville to potentially have some courses or something to where the two professions can work and play well together.
Yes, agreed. And that's something we're already doing. We're even doing internally and partnering and sharing resources internally as well as working with other industry partners in engineering and talking with them. So yes, we support each other, and we're definitely already having those discussions.
All right. Thank you.
We're already offering at least one course of engineering with A&amp;M Kingsville. Are we going to? I don't know where that was in the pipeline, but I-
We didn't offer it. We were not offering it right this minute. We couldn't get the higher enrollment that we needed.
Okay.
It was hard to do that, but we did offer it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Kroll?
No, thank you.
Dr. Turner?
Yeah, so I was wondering, as a program director, would the students have direct access to Texas Tech advisory to ensure that they're following everything that they needed for graduation? And will Texas Tech have facilities or offices at the Oso Creek? Will they? So just wondering how that layout's going to be.
Yes, that's an important piece. I would be performing in that aspect not just as a director for Del Mar College, but also for Texas Tech. They are also going to provide an advisor as well to link that gap.
Someone here, right? A real person that they have access to?
Well, we have an embedded advisor currently just for the architecture program, but I would be filling that role, but they would also be providing. And I've been in discussions with them, and so-
Will they have the banner Texas Tech, so the students kind of know?
I would expect branding would be an important part of all of this, marketing and so forth, because this would be a location. I would also, and this is something I want you all to remember because we're going to talk about this when we hammer out, or not hammer out, but put the MOU before you. It's going to grow. We're going to take, you know, our students, it's going to take a little time. As that program grows, their presence will grow. And that's very purposeful so that we don't have people around that we don't need. And so it's going to start in that capacity. And I think at a full-fledged type of scenario, this program would have staffing from Texas Tech at an increased level for sure for different components and so forth. Again, we want to make sure as we move ahead and for your consideration in the future that we are bringing before you an agreement and a commitment to grow something that, again, will be very long-term. I mean, this is a quota forever kind of thing, and these kind of partnerships already exist. And we've learned a lot from our colleagues from other colleges, namely El Paso and so forth. So, you know, it is a unique program. It does not compete with other regional places. And Mr. Kroll, you asked a question. It was something that we, I asked our team early on, well over 10 years ago, saying, well, look, we've, you know, A&amp;M system's close, UT a little closer. Everything's closer than Lubbock. Not everything, but most things are. But those two programs are. University of Houston is the other one. I think we even looked in there. And so when Texas Tech showed the interest and kept the interest, that was important. Perseverance, as was mentioned earlier, has been the theme of everything we've been talking about this afternoon. And this level of perseverance is different, and that's because Ms. Wright, she has led this from a long time ago and would not let this go even when things were not so. So we started off with, hey, we flew up to Lubbock and said, hey, we might, we're proposing this bond to go to the board. That's how the conversation kind of went, to the president and the provost and the dean of the university, saying, well, we've got this idea. And they're like, okay, ideas are great, but what? And so then fast forward to '16, the bond was passed. And then here we are. We just opened the facility. They came, and they're like, holy mackerel, these guys and gals, these gals and guys, we're not kidding. They were serious. And here we are today. So this is beyond perseverance. This is a little bit of, you know, a little bit of an obsession, I think.
Dr. Turner, do you have any more questions or comments? Nope. Okay. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. So I understand the El Paso program, that's with Texas Tech as well?
Yes, sir.
So they've got a lot of experience with what, okay. And then I thought I heard you say that it's likely we're going to attract students from out of the service area down in the valley. So we're going to have, these are not traditional commuting students. These are people that'll be moving to the area to, okay.
Yeah.
Much the way, I guess, you had to move to Lubbock to-
Yeah. The residential aspect of this would be, as we're talking about with other programs, with the housing, the multifamily housing, the apartment complexes and so forth. There's already a few. We've talked to a few. It's been a while since we've talked to a few of the apartment complexes that are being built around this college, literally down the street and so forth, to see if we can strike up a deal with them to accommodate out-of-town students.
How's our students?
Yes.
Okay. And then you made an offhand comment, I thought, at the end. Is there a possibility that Texas Tech would be offering graduate-level classes on our campus?
Yes. So for our students going to the next level, which be the master's degree level, they could take 12 hours here and then finish in Lubbock, which would be another year and a half. But by that time, we'll see how distance or learning has advanced. But with that, we are also, we don't teach our design studios over the summer. And summers are an opportunity where, which is actually a requirement in architectural programs, to travel abroad, go into a practicum or something like that, and they do that over the summer. So we could house some graduate studios in building resiliency and sustainability on our campus.
Okay. I was understanding that our faculty will be doing the first two years, and then tech faculty would be doing the next two years, but as adjuncts. Is there opportunity for our faculty to become adjuncts and employed also by tech?
We've got, to get started, we wanted to use our existing resources to get things up and running. And so all of our faculty have the credentials, and they are looking at that. And Dean Fluke has also been reaching out to those in the community as well and some other alums nearby to also fill that gap.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Dr. Babaly?
I've seen Ms. Laura's persistence as a parent for the last 15 years since our daughters played, you know, in the same field. But I've not seen you as a persistent academic here. And I applaud you for that. I think, again, this program's time has come. I think two plus two with Texas Tech in architecture. And some of the key concepts that you mentioned, actually, are very important for our region in the field of architecture. Sustainability, right? And in the sense that all the industry that we have here will be growing and need to have architecture that is environmentally sound and with view of climate change and all the things that we have to keep in mind as things are changing. And sustainability is a big factor in tourism in this country, in this region. So any new structures, any new designs that are coming, and this is the new, you know, they're embracing artificial intelligence in architecture now, right? So that's a big factor. So have you taken that into consideration and have a specific focus on our region's industry needs and employment needs?
Yes, and that was one thing that Texas Tech was really interested in as well as, you know, with being in the region that we are and being hurricane-prone and coming up with new technologies and exploring that and researching that on how to make our buildings more resilient to environmental impacts and extreme environmental impacts is also of great concern, and they're really interested in that as well.
Thank you. I think that's very important for us to keep in mind, to support.
Yes, or Mr. Kroll?
Well, just one other pleasure. You're talking about resiliency and so on. I seem to remember Dr. Joseph Minor, who's a native Corpus Christian, was a major impact in the development of windstorm codes at Texas Tech. He was a local engineer, or his brother was a local engineer, and he was a professor up there, so.
Yes, they have a strong wind engineering where they do testing and stuff like that. I'm encouraged to develop a collaboration with that as well.
Yeah, yeah. Well, Dr. Minor is deceased, so, but I recall some of his presentations to the local engineering community years ago.
One last comment from Dr. Eskamia?
I would be remiss if I did not mention former Regent Jim Boggs, graduate from the School of Architecture, College of Architecture at Texas Tech, has been a strong supporter of this, and I just wanted to bring up his name. He's not here present with us today, but I know how strongly he feels about this, and he has been and has been a great supporter of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright, Dr. Holcomb, for bringing this. Appreciate all of your work, Laura, on this. I know it's been a labor of love, and you've, again, the perseverance and the dedication that you've given to this momentous occasion is not lost on us. So I'm going to do a shout-out to all the Texas Tech and Red Raider alums out there. Get ready. We might have a ribbon cutting soon, and we expect to see a lot of red on the Del Mar College Oso Creek Campus. Thank you. I think that's it for now.
Thank you for your time today.
All right. We have on our agenda a policy review by Ms. Tammy McDonald, and she is not with us today. And so Jessica Alanese is going to do that policy review presentation for us.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Regents, and Dr. Eskamia. Today, we're going to review an update to the policy review schedule and the expected policy work that will continue or will occur this fiscal year. Every year, we expect to review at least two chapters within the manual. So last fiscal year, we had identified Chapter Five, which is Human Resources, and Chapter Six, Faculty and Instruction, on the schedule to be reviewed during 2022 and 2023. However, due to the amount of legislative changes we were expecting, we went ahead and listed these chapters as pending so that way we could address this fiscal year to include all of the possible revisions that were passed during this legislative session. So with the addition of Chapter Five and Chapter Six, we will also have scheduled reviews of Chapter Seven, which is Student Services, and Chapter Eight, which is Miscellaneous Procedures. For the schedule for this fiscal year, we will move forward and identify areas that were specifically impacted by state legislation, and we will consider those items as priority due to any effective dates that might be impending on this schedule and anything that will have an impact on current institutional processes. So some of those legislative items that you see here have been identified as priorities on our schedule. So House Bill One and Senate Bill Seventeen have to deal with DEI programs, practices, and initiatives. So we will be addressing policies that deal with that. SB Eighteen has to deal with faculty tenure. Senate Bill Thirteen Seventy-Six is a bill that will include revisions into our Chapter Five policy related to military employment preference, which is just an amendment of the Veterans Employment Preference that's currently in practice and just includes some additional criteria into that. SB Eighteen Ninety-Three also addresses the prohibition of social media applications on governmental entity devices. And then SB Four Twelve, which talks about protections for pregnant and parenting students. So as you see, there's a wide range of topics within some of these priorities that we have identified. So some of these revisions will span across multiple chapters within the manual itself. So as we move forward into this fiscal year, again, Chapters Five and Six will be addressed related to the priorities that we've mentioned before. And we also expect that as in review of these two chapters, we will encounter possibly some changes that are not related to any state or federal mandates that we will also be addressing at that time. In addition, again, to Five and Six, Chapter Seven and Chapter Eight will also be reviewed and revised as necessary. Chapter Eight, we anticipate revisions due to this chapter based on the current advisory project for safety and security that we currently have with Weaver. And then we will also address any kind of proposed changes not related to any state and federal mandates that were recently passed. So just to go over again, a possible timeline for the review schedule related to policies. In September and October, we will, excuse me, September, October, and November, we will take the time to, again, address- take the time to, again, address any of those priority items that we mentioned before and review any of the possible policy changes that are related to those legislative items that have been recently passed. And we will prioritize them based on effective dates of when those legislation items do come into effect for the institution. We will also, we plan to bring forward any of those possible revisions to the Board in December, so that way they can follow your normal policy review process with any notifications or approvals that are needed from the Board at that time. So, and then after that, we will move forward with continuing to address those four chapters for any additional items that we need to revise during this fiscal year. So is there any questions?
So for clarification, Jessica, and do you anticipate actually bringing us an action item on those things that staff identifies this fall? So you'll bring those for action, but then if there's any other discussion or then the Board can bring up any other issues that we might want to bring up in December for consideration in the spring?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, that is the plan. So we'll bring forward any kind of action items in December and then continue to review those four chapters for any other changes that are not necessarily listed as priority, but to do a complete review of those four chapters.
Okay. For the benefit of the Board members who were not a part of this discussion a couple of years ago, in our Board's self-evaluation, we identified this regular schedule of policy review. So we don't review the entire manual at one time, we do it in these chapter sections. So if you need homework between now and December, you are welcome to scan those four chapters and just kind of come familiar with what's already in there. Again, staff will do what they recommend changes would be, but if there is discussion or if you identify something early and you want to send me a quick note about it, let's do that. But we won't necessarily convene a task force of the Board. We'll just discuss anything that needs to be changed and ask staff to look at either best practices or do research for us or whatever. But we can certainly do a whole-scale rewrite, but that is not the intent unless the Board chooses otherwise. So staff will, again, bring us their best recommendations in December. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanted to add a footnote regarding the recently enacted legislation and how that's going to impact some of our policy. Just stay tuned. Some of that is still under legal review, and we're working through that with Dr. Eskamia and Ms. Alanese and Ms. McDonald, so not to get into today. I just wanted to give you a heads up. Some of that is, it's not a foregone conclusion that everything that got passed is going to be put into place, so stay tuned.
Any other questions or comments for Jessica?
I have just one. Curious about SB Eighteen, the faculty tenure issues, what's going on with that?
We're going to let Augie answer that question. Don't put Jessica on the spot like that.
What was your question, Dr. Babley?
The status of the discussion of SB Eighteen.
That's one of the, that's one of the, that's one of the pieces of legislation that's still under review.
So Tammy and Jessica and their staff will bring forward those things that are easy, and they might leave for further discussion, those things that are still under legal review. There we go.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Strabos, let's talk about 2016 bond. Any opening comments, sir?
Only that this bond close out is, first of all, all the great work that's been put forth to opening the Osso Creek campus is just to be touted, and we're ever so grateful for all the work, for all the groups that came together, both internally and externally. In closing out this project, we wanted to bring that, we wanted to bring everything forth for y'all to see how we went about closing out the financials of this particular project. In doing so, I asked the team to bring this forward because there were some steps that were made in our accounting practices or in our accounting of all of this that I felt needed to be brought forth to the college, to the Board of Regents especially, and clarified so that, so that, one, we could close things out and that you all would understand very clearly that, how we got to this, to this conclusion. There were some steps taken that were, I think, we were eager to close out some of the costs that came from this, and I think we kind of tripped over ourselves in some regards. We were working off of two electronic systems, and therefore the communication was not the best. I want all of y'all to know that anytime there are these kinds of issues, I will bring them to you all. I won't just, I won't just fix them, and we have fixed them. We have, we have covered all our costs and everything else. But along the way, we had two separate electronic systems, one the General Ledger and one board, what's it called?
E-Builder.
E-Builder, sorry. E-Builder, and we're not communicating well. But that being said, I want Mr. Strabos and team to explain how we closed this out and how we've rectified our situation from the accounting process.
Yes, sir. Next slide, please. So this is also a story of perseverance that, and I'm going to give you a little background. Everyone knows the story, but until we tell the story, do we really know the story? So this is also Creek at Nightfall. If you haven't seen it at night, it's a beautiful place. In the daytime, it's pretty at night also. Next slide, please. So we have some goals, and this is not from the official goals, this is kind of where we've ended up. You have a state art learning environment for students and the community. You just heard that from Laura. And so it honors our commitment to the community, the community engagement, the community involvement. We saw that with Congressman Cloud. To promote the campus design recently in Nashville, we've been making presentations at regional and national prep conferences about this campus. Next slide. What have we done for our community? Next slide, please. They're working. The internet's slow today. All right. The Osso Creek is an area development catalyst. If you haven't been out there and watched the changes, it's there. Now, these changes would have happened, but they're happening now today because Delmar's there, because Osso Creek Campus is there. You have the City of Corpus Christi, they've really stepped up. Rodfield Road improvements, Yorktown Boulevard improvements, the intersection at Rodfield and Yorktown, the Police Training Academy, the Regional Transit Authority, the two super stops, commercial development in the area, apartments, stripes, shopping centers, and these all add to the tax base. Next slide, please. This is a strategic plan. We had the conference. This is a transformation point. This changes everything. It fulfills your strategic plan and makes it become real. It's not just a plan, it's real. Next slide. Your construction timeline, you saw, Laura, this one is about the same almost. Starts back to 2013, and even before that, the land was actually bought in 2013, 95 acres. So the planning for all of that happened even before then. It's where you have students in seats in January of 2023, a more than 10-year process, multiple fundings, the 2014 bond for master planning, 2016 bond for the construction. Next slide. The bond itself and what it took to get there. Next slide. All right, so this is a little bit of history. This was your college board meeting on October 1st, kind of reminds you, and some of the history that went into it, first started advertising and meetings on this, and what you heard consistently was, there were going to be problems. So you've known this all along about the budget problems, but we managed to solve them. Next slide. So one of the core problems on the package two for the main building, STEM, and Colony Arts, bids came in 30% over the estimated construction costs, a variety of issues with that. You heard that story, but that impacts everything. When you start out behind, how do we catch up? Next slide. So what were our challenges? Y'all know this, COVID-19, you can talk to everyone in the country, they'll all say they got through it somehow, some way. We did too. But at the same time, July 25th, Hurricane Hannah, it's like, do you even remember that? Well, here's what happens, and the same thing with Winter Storm Yuri in February of 2021. When these kinds of environmental disasters come, we have to not just hit the reset button and the pause, it's stop. You have to stop everything and prepare the construction site. All it takes is a loose two-by-four, and suddenly you've got broken windows. You have to pick everything up. You can't leave anything laying down. It impacts the personnel that work on the site. They can't come back to the site. The Winter Storm Yuri, it impacted all the transportation, all logistics, supplies to the site. So these were major impacts, yet we continued, and then construction inflation. The next slide. So here's your inflation, from when the bond passed until we started construction, almost 17%. Construction starts, we finish construction, another 12%. That total combined, it's not the math, it's the construction, ends up being almost 31% inflation from the time we started the bond until we had students in seats. Those are really hard to overcome. The next slide. So what was our campus funding sources? Bond proceeds, $139 billion. Interest income, $3,592,050. Plant funds, we've used $12.2 million, and surplus from fiscal year '22, almost $750,000. And you have the percentage with, percentages with those. Where'd the money go? Construction, almost $143 million, 92%. IT and audiovisual, $5 million, 3%. Insurance, builder's risk, $1.6 million. Legal fees, $122,000. Furniture fixtures and equipment, $4.7 million. Instructional supplies, $1 million. The next slide. So how we balance it all out, giving you the breakdown, the details. Total revenues from the bond and the interest income, $142,592,050. The expenses, construction, the ITAV, insurance, builder's risk, legal, furniture, fixtures, equipment, instructional supplies, total of $155 million. That's a deficit of almost $13 million. Where did the $13 million come from? So part of it was the Board-designated plant funds, $9.8, $9,850,000. Then we used plant funds that were undesignated for $2,279,623. Another part of the change order number 14, $69,161, in fiscal year '22 surplus, $743,681. Next slide. So where'd the money go? So year by year, from 2018 up to the current, so the solid line at the top is that $142 million for the bond plus the interest income. And so really, starting in January '22, and that's dollar per dollar, how we started spending more money beyond what the bond proceeds were. The next slide. So we're higher education, we never stop learning. What did we truly learn? So builder's risk insurance should be included in the general contractor's bids, and that's what we're doing now on all of our projects going forward. Include the end users directly in the design and construction meetings. You can look behind me in the audience, you can ask them how many are not attending some kind of meetings, and every single person behind me is in one or more meetings. I've got people who missed meetings today because they were here for the earlier meeting on the tax rates. Constant monitoring of design and construction projects. Well, what does that really mean? Everyone says that. We can talk to the architects and talk to the contractors. They'll ask me if I want a desk in their office. I'll tell them only if I can get it for free, and I can't have that, all right? So I'm out on the job sites, I walk the job sites, the faculty, staff who are involved in the projects, they're walking the job sites. So we're in there constantly, looking at what's going on. The architects are there, we're working on these projects constantly. Paying cash for assets when possible, rather than debt financing, and that's a financing strategy, because it's cheaper to pay for it when we have the cash versus borrowing more money and that long-term debt.
John, I'd just like to add, that piece right there is what I wanted to emphasize. There's been a pay for as much as we could by cash since before the bond, that preceded the bond in 2013, when we bought the land for $6.6 million, 96 acres for that. And we started with, there was a, there was a plan, and Dr. Nick, I don't know if you recall this, but there was a plan to do as much as we could by paying for it with the reserves that we had any time that we could in order to reduce the amount of bond indebtedness that we would go out and ask the taxpayers for. So we started there, and then this board, or some members, other members of this board also were part of the decision to also enable us to pay for much of the audiovisual, IT, and FFNE, furniture fixtures and so forth, furniture fixtures, various equipment, with cash. What that also did was enabled us to put as, every bit of that money into the actual construction and therefore take off those one-time costs off the overall value of the project, as John was just saying, and not finance our furniture, not finance the land, not finance a lot of, a lot of consumables, audiovisual and the like, of which was extremely expensive. And so there's been a cash, pay cash as you, as you go approach, again, to mitigate overall costs of the campus, but still, and improve value, because that, those, those construction dollars went into the next 50 to 75 years of that particular location.
Yes, sir. And then the big one that we've learned, we've got the General Ledger accounting system, which is the accounting system. You can talk to the accountants, you can talk to the auditors. The last thing they want is a different accounting system mixed in with them. We want to keep them separate. But E-Builder was not talking to the General Ledger. And so I've talked to accounting, we're going to reconcile these. So there were transactions in the General Ledger that were not in E-Builder. So when I needed an accurate report, I would get one from E-Builder, but then later, what we've learned is, well, that's not what was in the General Ledger. And a good example is the $1.6 million for the builder's risk insurance, which was in the General Ledger, but had never been entered into E-Builder. So where I'm working daily now with finance about being sure that the numbers I have come from them, but also are inside E-Builder's well.
And was not part of the contract and is something we have rectified since and so forth, so it was outside.
Yes, sir. So that's the 2016 bond in 10 minutes. I had instructions about that.
Are there questions or comments for Mr. Strabos? Mr. Lo?
I would just say on, on multi-year projects in the future, budget inflation on material, it can be hard, but, I mean, that, it may be the contingency needs to get bigger, or you just got to take a look at what prices have been doing. I mean, I know that this was weird, but I know at the city, we had that issue, and we found some ways to resolve it on paving costs and stuff like that.
So inflations were built in from the get-go. Inflation's contingency and so forth, but we're talking about what, 5%, 4%?
3%, 4% was the inflation number?
Yeah, I built a house at the same time.
Yeah, but to your, to your point, it's a different day, and as I always tell my sons, everything that can happen will. Okay, so get ready. You don't want it to happen to you, but it's just the way of doing business anymore, and it's a different, it's a different number anymore. And then you add to all the other factors. I mean, Winter Storm Yuri, what's that?
Right, that was that big freeze.
Well, no, I know all too well. I remember, and then the hurricanes and everything else. It's just, we just live in a different place in a different time, and you can bet we have those noted.
Great. Mr. Krul.
Now, I just wanted to concur with what Regent Loeb was saying, is that for future projects, we need to take a broader look at plugging in a contingency number. So, I mean, even if, at the end of the day, the project comes in under the budget, that's better than $15 million over.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Strabos.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Garcia, we're going to look, you're going to report to us. This actually does not take an action item, but it is a required report on the write-offs for our accounts receivable.
Yes, so thank you, Madam Chair. Have to apologize, I failed to include this statement right here before you in your original board package. To compensate for that, a document was distributed to each and every one of you during the lunch hour. And what it is, is this year's write-off. You also have a second document, which is the 2022 year write-off for comparison. So I'm going to pause for a second here while you guys peruse through the documents.
We have the 2020 in front of us. We have the 2020 in front of us. It says fiscal year 2020.
Sure, on the, on the heading in your board package, you should have the 8/31/2022. As a hard copy, you should have the 8/31/2023.
And then, sorry, right underneath it says fiscal year 2020. So ignore that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Got to update that Excel spreadsheet.
Good.
It looks like all the dates are in 2019 and 2020, though.
Yeah, yeah.
One document that was in the package, the one they handed out.
I know, but even on the left of the one that's titled 8/31/23, to the left, it's talking about 2019, 2020. So are those correct dates?
So those are correct dates. Those are the receivables that are three years and over that we're writing off in the current year of 2023. So you have two dates. Okay. So we're going to transition now into the, so I'm going to go ahead and start. So, we're going to transition now into the, so I'm going to go ahead and start off with the president, with the discussion. So, in accordance with the college's write-off and default board policy, the college is required to report to the board on an annual basis, the write-off of student receivables after multiple collection attempts made by the college. This year's write-offs is valued at $188,768. These are for receivables that are over three years old, so I think the fiscal year 2020 and beyond that is what we're writing off in fiscal year 2023. I also want to point out, a student account hole will remain permanently in place as a final collection effort. The student account hole prevents a student from accessing any of their academic records until the debt is fully satisfied. So, this is a paper counting concept of writing off old receivables, and this particular case is three years over, starting with 2020, that's in lower letters on the documents. So, now I'm going to ask that we transition into the PowerPoint slide. It's a one-pager, real quick. Perfect, thank you. So, I also want to point out to the board that our collection rate performance is financially sound relative to other similar community colleges throughout the state. Delmar College tied with El Paso has the second highest collection rate relative to community colleges listed on this slide. If there are any questions, I'll address them now. Otherwise, that concludes my presentation. Yes?
So, did the college do any forgiveness of student loan during COVID? Did we do anything to help those kids that were not able to complete? Because I'm assuming that's some of this debt that I see in front of me, so I was just wondering if we did any forgiveness to some of those students.
Go ahead, Row.
So, there's a two-part answer to that. The first answer is the information that's before you is for students with financial aid who did not complete, and now I'm having to refund those dollars back to the Department of Education, but because of that, the college is now financially, carries a financial burden until we collect those dollars from the student. So, that's what you see here. So, the bulk of the writers here, the write-off, I want to say it's over 70%, relates to those students on financial aid, okay?
That's what we call return to title four.
Return to title four dollars. Thank you, sir. Your second part to the question is, yes, the, during, during the pandemic, we did receive federal dollars, and at that point in time, we did work with forgiving some of the loans by paying or using some of those dollars, giving it to the students, allowing them to pay, pay down any debt, student receivable or student federal loans. But did the college take any action to directly make a decision to write off student loans? The answer was no. Okay, so, yes?
There was other forms of assistance that were given with the HERF dollars.
Yes, sir.
Through a type of forgiveness and/or assistance to help them get in because of some previous debts that would hold them from, that borrowed from.
Yeah, okay, okay. Good. Any other questions?
I have a, I don't know whether this is worthwhile or not, but do we use any kind of collection agency to?
So, in the past, we have used collection agencies. I think it's very costly, I think what I've learned from that, or what I've heard from that, is it is a very costly proposition, and if I understand our students, they're very transitional commuter type, meaning, meaning that, transitory, meaning that it's very difficult to try to track down a student, they're always moving around. That's pretty typical with two-year community colleges. So, it wasn't very cost-effective for us to, to work with a collection agency.
Yeah, it's not quite the same as trying to collect on delinquent property taxes.
Yeah, yeah. And then when you think about the write-offs that you see before that, these are title four students. So, it's very difficult to collect anything from, from a person that has very little resource to begin with. Again, not very cost-effective.
Yeah, all right.
Any other questions?
I'll just say, I think, I think you're doing, you're doing better than the county does on tax collections. By far, especially this year. And then, yeah, I mean, I, I think that's a really good collection rate. How often does somebody come back years later, want a copy of their transcript, and they're on the list, and how often do they pay, and how often do they redisappear?
We're going to get Vice President Benavides to, yes, Dominguez.
That does happen. You know, several times in a semester, and we do our best to help them. We do have a hold on their account.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, that happens.
So, I mean, on the 242 for the FA adjustments, is that a lot? I mean, is that kind of a lot due to COVID, or is that a normal amount of people?
Yeah, so, I would say it's, it's average when you look at the statement. You also have the two-year statement, so you can compare the two years. I can tell you that in 2023, our collection efforts did improve from one year to the next, so there are improvements. Whether or not the pandemic is going to have an impact in these receivables in the future, because remember, we're writing off three years of receivables that are also, it takes us back to 2020. The pandemic hit around 2021, so next year, next couple of years, we'll start to see the effects of the pandemic, so that's still not known today.
I can tell you, over the years, it's, I can always tell you, it's somewhere around $200,000. That's just the number we go. I'm getting a nod from John back there, I'm just saying, we've done this a lot, it's give or take on one side or another of 200,000, so.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's good.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I have a professional skull cracker, and she's at that percentage, and so, yeah.
Yeah, understood.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
All right, all right, our pending list was in your packet for today. We've got a pretty hefty October agenda, including what we hope is going to be a decision or action item on the organizational management and leadership proposal as well. So, we've got quite a few things, including strategic planning. And remember, that meeting is going to be the second Tuesday, excuse me, the first Tuesday of October since a number of us are traveling for the national conference. Anything on the pending list you have any questions about? If not, we will move to our consent agenda. We have a number of minutes from our meetings in the past couple of months, and an investment report for August and a financial report for July. Is there any item needs to be pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, we'll take a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Lo made the motion, Mr. Cruel made the second. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion carries. We do not have anything else for closed session. So, our calendar for our upcoming meetings, we have our, as I just mentioned, our October 5th board meeting, then a number of us are traveling to, for the national, for the national convention, October 3rd, I'm sorry, I said the 5th, October 3rd. The scholarship dinner on October 19th, and then our regular November meeting will be on the second Tuesday in November. The December meeting, Delia, did you get a consensus on moving the December meeting to the 5th? That's, that one's on the 5th.
That's your 5th.
So, Tuesday, the first Tuesday in December will be our regular board meeting, because a number of folks are going to attend the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Leadership Conference in Austin the second week of December. Is there anything else for the good of the cause? I think we will adjourn our meeting at 3:19 PM. Thank you all very much.